Testing, testing. Testing, there we go. Okay, we got it now.
Testing.
Testing.
Testing, testing.
Can I watch the meter?
Okay.
Just say test.
All right, we ready to go?
No, just say test.
Test. S.
Test.
Ready to start?
Okay.
That's working slowly. Do you like yearly have any files? I was gonna, I'm gonna go. Yeah, can you just let him know we need, if there's a separate password for here, we need that too. Not sure he gave us that.
You need to be to start the meeting?
Just to make sure that we're working at home. Anyone can go on the website, just see that we're working, we're live, that would be great.
Hello? Testing. Hello? It's like, okay.
We good to go? Okay. All right, I'd like to call the Town Shelby Public Hearing for Proposed L-2 Flood Plains and Budget Workshop Meeting for September 16th, 2025 to order. Do we need a roll call?
Councilman Zalini? Councilwoman Limina?
Yes.
And Councilman Macedi?
Present. So we have a quorum, we can proceed with that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Thank you. First item on our agenda is to act, is to add an acting supervisor, and we've got, we have received legal counsel to make sure that we're doing everything in the proper manner. So the town needs, and I'm gonna read what our attorney said. "The town needs an acting town supervisor in order to complete the budget process. The existing board members cannot be appointed to the position of acting town supervisor unless they first resign their board member position, which none of us are willing to do. It also creates an appearance of bias or impropriety if the town board will appoint one of its own members to the position of acting town supervisor." So that being said, I would like to introduce a resolution to make Jim, James Hemingway, the acting supervisor until the end of our fiscal year. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ed, roll call.
Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
And Macedi?
Yes. Motion is approved. Jim, if you would like to join us up here. So I'm going to run the meeting for the last time, Jim will take over in the future.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, James Hemingway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of supervisor.
And I will faithfully discharge the supervisor, job of supervisor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I've been reminded that we should have a, an opportunity for public discussion, is that correct, Lynda? If anybody has anything to say, feel, please feel free to speak up. Okay. If anyone has any comments about the proposed floodplain, please speak up. I don't see any acknowledgement. So with that, we will need a motion to approve the resolution for Local Law 225 related to the flood hazard prevention to the Orleans County Planning Board for review.
I'll second.
Okay, who made the motion? Ed?
I move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Zalini? Limina?
Yes.
Macedi?
Yes.
And Hemingway?
Yes.
Resolution is, is approved. We need a motion for a resolution to schedule a special meeting to vote on the proposed law number two sometime during the week of September 9th, I think we picked Monday?
September 29th.
September 29th. Any issues with that or comments? Okay, then if not, we need a motion to approve the resolution for a special meeting to vote on proposed local law number two the evening of September 29th, Monday, September.
Monday, at six o'clock.
At six o'clock, so.
So moved.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call vote, Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Macedi?
Yes.
And Hemingway?
Yes.
So the resolution is approved for the meeting at six o'clock, Monday night, September 29th, 2025. We need a, pardon me?
Maybe, gotta be closer.
Okay, we need a motion for a resolution to authorize all unpaid water and debt service charges to be levied to the upcoming 2026 town and county taxes.
So moved.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Darlene?
Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Macedi?
Yes.
And Hemingway?
Yes. We need a motion to approve a resolution for the approval of the July 8th public hearing minutes on the proposed LL2 wind energy. Let me ask a question, what is LL2?
That is Local Law Number Two, and that's what we discussed at the board meeting, that it was a wind energy local law. We did have the public hearing on July 8th, but then after that, we didn't have any more meetings because of things that happened. So this new local law tonight for the floodplain will be Local Law Number Two, and then the wind could be another number when we open that up again.
Okay, so we're just approving the meeting minutes for that, then?
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve?
I move.
Seconded by?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Darlene?
Zalini?
Yes.
Macedi, or Lynd, Limina?
Yes.
Macedi?
Yes.
And Hemingway?
Yes. Resolution is approved. We need a motion to approve, for a resolution to pay the bills for, is that the whole month or just a partial month?
It's still a partial month, we've got quite a few bills we're going through, and these are the ones, they're just, we're trying to play catch-up.
Okay, Lynda looked at them this evening, I saw them. I, I don't have any thing to add or any discussion, does anybody else? Okay, then if not, we need a resolution to approve paying the bills.
So moved.
Seconded by?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Darlene?
Macedi, Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Macedi?
Yes, motion.
And Hemingway?
I'm going to abstain, I haven't had a chance to look at them, obviously, so. We have a quorum, we have a majority, so the resolution is approved, and Jim can look at them afterwards. Next, we'll move into the budget workshop. Lynda, maybe you can help me with this a little bit?
Oh, yeah, we have to, we need a resolution to close the public hearing, we skipped that part, sorry.
Okay, we need.
For the local law, for the floodplains.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to approve a resolution to close the meeting for the proposed local law two floodplains.
I move.
Seconded by?
Second.
Roll call vote, Zalini?
Yes.
Limina?
Yes.
Macedi?
Yes.
And Hemingway?
Yes.
Okay, so the special meeting is adjourned. Now we'll move into the budget workshop. And tonight, we're just gonna, preliminary discussion to see what basically Dale and Darlene are looking at, and I think there are other things, too, so.
Yep, yep, so Dale, I don't know, I put this together for the board, it's very similar to the reports we used last year. I apologize for getting it too late, I just finished it this afternoon. It'll show you for the two highway funds, what we spent in '23, '24. There's a budget column for '25, and then where we are year-to-date right now. That was as of, those year-to-date numbers are like two weeks ago, or, you know, after the September meeting, so anything going forward is not included in there. So it should give you a general idea of where you are right now. And then Darlene?
All right, do you want to walk us through this?
Yep, so Dale, we'll start with you. Are you prepared to talk a little about kind of some of the things you're aware of? So if we start with, can we start, yep, probably. I'm not sure how much of, because a lot of this was put together by the time we started this last year. Were you involved at all in the income section, Dale, or just the expense side?
I'm not in charge of the income, no.
I understand, but are you, but you know, like, you've given us CHIPS money, you know those things, or?
Those I know, yes.
Okay, so you might be able to help us with some of the income section, okay.
You can just work through your.
Do you want to start?
What you brought.
Yeah.
And then we can work our way back and fill this in. We don't expect you to have all the answers tonight, Dale, so.
All right.
And whatever numbers you have, of course, they're subject to scrutiny and change, and.
All right, what, you gave me these worksheets. So I have budget line 5130, I believe that's a DB account.
DA.
It's a DA, all right.
It looks like it's equipment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That is my repair line. So.
The point, I'm sorry, Dale, I didn't mean to keep interrupting you. The point four is your repair line?
Yes.
Okay.
The other, the 200 and the 210 are reserve lines.
The 210, are you planning on buying anything in that, in the DA fund? Any equipment that would, we should?
Well, yeah, I had plans of maybe purchasing another roadside mower, new or used. So I was wondering, and I don't think, I don't think it's my, I would like to have $100,000 in that line.
Sorry, Dale.
So Dale, I thought about this the other night, did we, did we just repair a mower? Was it that same mower, or no, it was a different mower?
We repaired the tractor, the transmission.
Okay, that, so that was some, that's a different piece of equipment than?
It's the same equipment, I just want to update, upgrade that particular piece and have two available. I want to get away from the rotary mower that we have, 12-foot rotary mower, because when you get in the ditch, you're tipped, and the blades tend to throw gravel, stones, and grass out in the road, where a flail chopper would be much safer, avoiding the risk of hitting any car or person, or the operator.
Would the mower, the piece you have now, would it last us one more year? And I'm not saying we wouldn't do it, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to cover all the bases so we know as we're putting numbers together. And, and I know that it was only like a week or so ago, but do you know, do you have a rough idea what that, a new one would cost?
A brand-new one's $150,000. I would be fine with a used one.
That's tractor and mower?
Tractor and mower.
And that was out, excuse me, that was out of the 210, 5130 dot two?
Um, yeah, because there should, there should be a few dollars left in there at the end of the year. So it would just remain in the reserve fund.
So the mower you're talking about would come out of the 5130 dot two?
Is it? Two, point two one.
That's what I'm asking, okay, thanks.
The 210.
All right. Any idea what a used one would, just roughly, again, as we're talking?
I had opportunity a year or so ago to buy a John Deere that was all set up, and I believe it was $80,000.
So minimum is gonna be eighty, eighty to whatever, okay.
So just the mower is what you're thinking for this year, there's nothing else of any size?
Well, after the last meeting, I'm under the impression that we were to be very frugal. So I'm not gonna make a big wish list and be disappointed.
So the, so in the two, point twos, right, this year we budgeted $100,000?
Yes.
Are you saying next year, if you're only looking for the other mower, and that's coming out of the two point two one, that you would be zero in the point two line?
The, the point two is basically gone now, there's two, three thousand in there.
Right.
So the only thing, I was asking the possibility of building a fund balance in maybe the 210 of $100,000. Or if, you know, whatever it is that, and then if I have money left over, that would just add to it.
I think you're referring to what we discussed about accruing money so that we could have a fund, so when we have a major expenditure, we wouldn't have to bite the bullet all at one time.
Yep, that would be in that DA account that you can move.
That's something that the board has discussed, but really hasn't come up with any kind of conclusion as to what we're gonna do or how we're gonna handle it and how it's gonna be done for the accounting.
Yep.
Regulations, but that ultimately is where we want to go, so.
I'm just more thinking about, before we put any reserves in, in 5130 point two for equipment, are we budgeting anything there, or are you saying you could get by with zero next year?
Um, in that line, I guess I could get by with what's left.
Because you'll use what's in the reserve if, if, okay. That's all, I'm sorry, okay.
I didn't set up either one of those accounts, nor did I fund either one of the accounts, so.
Okay. And then in the reserve, that's where you would take the mower out of? What's sitting in the reserve?
Yes, both of them are, I believe, reserve accounts, the point two and the 210.
I don't think so, I think the, I think the point two is a regular equipment line for yearly purchases.
Then probably you would want to fund that, then.
Well, if we have money in the point two one, right, in the reserve account, if there is money there left over, we could encumber that and use that for next year, if there's money there. So I guess between the two accounts, are you saying that the only thing you want between those two accounts is that you could live with just a mower?
Yes, for now, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Why do we not know how much money is in the reserve fund, do we?
Which one, the 210?
Yeah.
Because, well, there was 267 to start.
Right.
And some of that is going to be used for the components for the new truck out of Watertown, Henderson Equipment, the box, the plow.
Okay.
I would like to back up just for a minute, and it won't come out of the reserve funds, but I was talking with John earlier, and would like to be able to purchase before now and Thanksgiving, another stainless steel Salter. I thought I had one purchased in Long Island for $3,500 bucks, but it doesn't seem to be coming to fruition. And where I bought those other two in New Jersey, he has extras there for seven to eight thousand. A brand-new one is 35. We don't need a brand-new one.
Okay, I guess I have a question. Have all of the invoices that were approved for that equipment, like the, we haven't actually gotten?
We haven't finished the process yet to get the last invoice.
Yeah, because there was a total for, in that meeting.
Yes.
Of $405,000 for the trucks, for the upgrades, for the plow.
It was 100.
And sandblasting, there was a number of items that came out of this.
Yes.
And all I'm asking, and this is just, all of those invoices haven't hit, all of that activity has not occurred, so the invoices haven't hit these lines.
That is correct.
Okay. So we really don't know exactly what'll be left at this point.
You know, like I said, I have a rough estimate of 50-some thousand in the 210. The 200 will be left with about $25,000 to $3,000.
Okay.
I will have money, I believe I'm gonna have money rolling over in my CHIPS account. So, um, went through all of this with Sarah quite a while ago, and the new truck was 194, the equipment was 150, and the estimated on the swap was 61, and the sandblast and painting was $6,900. It came in under budget on that.
I would just caution, I think Margaret will speak to this when, when we're kind of through here with Dale, but fund balance does not equal cash, and I think there was a little confusion about that last year when we went through the budget process. So while we may think we have extra money in the budget, there might be on paper, but that does not necessarily mean there is cash. So I think that's why I, you know, we need to be careful as we're going through the process and making sure that we might not have the excess available that we think we have.
Okay, with that being said.
Maybe we want to hear Margaret's piece first, I don't know.
Let me just make a comment, though. There was a resolution to buy the truck.
Yes.
So why don't we just buy the truck and move on from that? Because not only do we need to be mindful of our expenses, we need to be mindful of public safety issues, too.
Yes.
You need a plow to plow the roads, correct?
Yes.
And today is, September's half gone, we have to get going on it here, so why don't we just do it?
We did, we just approved the invoices tonight, so we are moving forward with that. The question, what I'm cautioning is, while we're going through and. The question, what I'm cautioning is, while we're going through and, and it looks like Dale might have extra money left over that hasn't been used, it's not necessarily extra money that hasn't been used. We could be pretty close to zero. So I don't think, when we, when we see lines that have not been completely spent out, let's not assume there's cash there to move forward.
Okay.
So that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, can you?
Okay, the four hundred account is my, um, parts, repairs. Um, there's always filters, oil, hydraulic oil, truck parts, um, and we haven't run the trucks through the shop yet. So there's a balance in there now, but, um, I only got two and a half, three feet of fuel in the tank, out of an eight foot tank. So there's going to be a good charge to fill that up before winter. So that'll come out of that.
What does it, I, I don't understand the whole thing. So we have our own gas tank back there like?
Yes.
Okay, how much, what does it cost us to fill that and how long would it roughly last?
Well, there's been years I have filled it in the fall and it's made it till spring.
How many, do you know how many gallons?
This, this past year, I've had to put fuel in it because we were constantly out on the road.
Do you know, can you tell us like roughly how much it holds?
It holds six thousand gallons.
Do, can we buy like enough to fill half the tank if we're low on, uh?
Um, yeah, you can do that.
Does it add to the expense?
If we come back in February and fuel has gone up, which it probably will because it's competing with home heating oil, you're gonna pay more for the other half.
Don't we get a state price on that though?
Yeah, but that fluctuates. That's not set one price for the year.
It is, I don't know why.
Every week it changes.
Okay, so it doesn't, there's not like a, um, range that they, it has to stay within? I must have misread, okay.
So that's one area we could presumably save money.
Yeah.
Okay.
How much fuel's in it right now, you said?
Two and a half, three feet.
How many gallons would that be?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I have a, um, a booklet with a gauge, you know, I can.
So it's an eight foot, at full it's eight foot is what you're saying?
Yeah, but it's, it's round, I mean.
But I mean, relatively, okay. So there's only about maybe a third?
Fifteen hundred gallons maybe?
Yeah, okay.
So on that line, because the equipment is getting older, um, we should be able to save some money with the two new trucks. But, and they do have the best warranties we could get, the most extended. And, um, so I would think the first couple of years, those trucks will be close to maintenance free.
How many trucks do we have other than the two new ones you're gonna be using?
We will have five suited up, the two new ones, six five three, six five two, and then, um, six five eight. Six five seven will be left open in case we need to haul something in a storm. We would have that available without having to take any truck apart or borrowing one from another municipality.
So you're not planning on getting rid of any of the older ones, putting them up for sale?
Six five four, I was very willing to, um, put up in the auction. Because they're brand new doesn't mean they won't break. And if they go over to the dealership, I wanna have a backup.
So what do you think for repairs and parts then? If we budgeted a hundred thousand for this year?
Mm-hmm. A hundred thousand to a hundred and ten thousand.
More than this year even?
No, I mean, that's what I want to start January first.
Yeah, I, that's, I, yes, I guess what I'm, so I'm always talking twenty twenty six. So you want more money next year in twenty twenty six, but if we have newer vehicles, won't we be able to cut that down some?
Um, yeah, that's, that, that's the fervently of the board for sure. I mean, you ask me what I would like and my estimate is a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand for repairs.
Yeah, but why would you need more if you got two brand new trucks?
Because the mowing tractor we have right now is hemorrhaging, um, hydraulic oil and the brakes need to be. You know, we have to pull the axles to change the brakes in it.
But isn't that the one we're talking about replacing? Or no?
I'm not replacing it. I was wanting to have two. So when we go out to do the roads, we're not spending all this time. We can go out, get the roads done. We will have a piece of machinery on the higher traveled roads that is safer and not kicking grass and stones and stuff out.
So I guess there, we have to look at it from a want and from a need standpoint. I mean, I'm sure you would want to have a lot of things. Our goal obviously is to have a net sum zero of a budget increase. So any increase that you incur, we have to get an equal amount from some other place.
Understood.
So that's what, that's just what the philosophy is.
Like I said, I can, if you wanna redo it for what we had in twenty five, so, so be it. Um, DB fifty one ten?
So John, let's switch pages. Go to the one that says DB on it in front of the numbers.
Would you rather stay with the DA?
Nope, whatever, whatever.
Well, that's just the way my papers were stacked. Okay. Um, the one hundred account is, um, personnel pay. And we're, I believe we're gonna have a shortfall this year. So I put in for one hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. The thousand, DB fifty one ten, one hundred.
Payroll for, um, maintenance of roads. Dale, I'm sorry, is that, is that just an allocation? You know what your total payroll is and now you're allocating it to different?
No, I mean, that's all that that line is for, is for paychecks.
Underst- understood.
Okay, so, um, it's six months. We, we try to keep it May through November. And then November, we usually try to switch back to the fifty one forty two payroll account for six months, which would take us back to the end of April.
Yes, but I guess what I'm asking is, when you, when you do that, you must be taking the, you know what your?
It's a thousand forty hours per MEO.
And you know their rate already because of the contract? I guess that's where I'm going. So you, you know the dollar amount. There's, it's just an allocation of their pay to whatever category, right? Well, I'm just walking through it for John and Jim's sake.
Thousand forty?
Thousand forty hours per MEO, which is four thousand one hundred and sixty hours for the six months. At thirty dollars and fifty cents is one hundred and twenty six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And I rolled it up so we don't have a shortfall to one hundred and twenty eight thousand.
We've been minus one MEO though, for six months now or more. I mean?
Yep, and my fifty one forty two was, um, depleted.
Due to what?
Vacation and comp time.
Is that because the winter was so harsh or?
No, um, there had to be a buyout payoff.
Do we, Margaret, do we, are we accruing for like comp time?
I believe that Dale's keeping track of the comp time because if the drivers in the wintertime accrue the comp time, the actual hours are multiplied by one and a half in order to comply with the law. And then there's a bucket of money for each person. Uh, it's my impression that it's kept at a certain number.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that's all that they can pay. If the money is not used during the year, do they get, I would think that they would prepay out that money.
After so many hours of accrued comp time, the overtime is reflected in their paycheck.
Yes, that's correct. But with the comp time money.
That, it's, it's, um, time, I guess the easiest way to explain it is it gives them extra vacation days in the summer to use whenever they want.
So I guess what I'm asking is, are we carrying the liability for that comp time? So when it gets paid out, like we're aware?
It is not on the books.
Okay, should it be?
Yes, it should be.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing that I just wanna point out though, is that no matter what happens with someone getting terminated or a buyout, those people are all going to get that comp time, one way or the other. Isn't that true?
Correct.
So that really, you know, just wasn't budgeted for. I think last year's winter was more severe than it has been.
I, I guess that's what I'm saying. So regardless of whether they take it in their paycheck or they accrue it and use it as comp time, it still comes out of salaries?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, and I guess if, what I'm trying to figure out is, are we accounting for it in the budget by, by putting in like the overtime? And if not, are we putting it on our balance sheet as a liability that it's?
Yeah, it is currently not being accrued. I can tell you that for sure. What are you saying about the fifty one? Oh, are you giving me a? Oh, the account number.
So this is extra. So when they take their time in the summer and they put down on the pay sheet that they want to use a day of comp time, I have to put that into the winter personnel line because that's where it was occurred. You know, that's where it was determined. So I mean, all the money that you're, you're talking about is going to be in the winter payroll.
Right.
But if, in December thirty first, if they have time on the books that they're carrying till the next year, can they do that or no? At the end of the year, it has to all be used?
I don't think they can carry comp over. Yes.
Yeah, so the time doesn't carry over, but I do believe that they have to be paid for it because they did earn it.
Okay.
When, when they worked extra in the winter.
So at least by year end, we are clean of any liability. Like we shouldn't, we don't have to carry a liability at the end of the year.
That is correct.
But we probably should carry a liability during the year because we don't, we, if we're not recording it, we don't really know where we stand with payroll.
Right.
With salaries.
Yes, so what I would suggest in that case, we still would pay them through payroll the same way we always did. But we know what the comp time is. We know how many hours it is. And we can certainly book an entry and then that expense would be recognized, right, in the, in the appropriate time. And then when they actually took the comp time, it would just come out of the accrual. It wouldn't have to hit the expense.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we would have a reconciling amount that we would know per person, how much each person had?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have two questions. Is that part of the, their contract?
Yes.
Okay. And, I mean, how much money are we talking at, at the end of the year? Tens of thousands of dollars or something less?
Thirty five thousand or better. Um, last year, we, we did over seven hundred and fifty hours of overtime. So I budgeted for eight hundred so we don't have a zero balance going into this fall.
Okay.
The thirty dollars, fifty cents, that's straight time? And so it's forty five dollars in change, forty six dollars in overtime?
Yes.
Okay, so for maintenance of roads, you're looking for one twenty nine?
For personnel.
Yes, okay.
Now, as far as the, um, equipment or the reserve fund, again, um, I don't think that's up to me because I don't know at the end what income is or what savings are, or reserves to put in. So if we go down to the fifty one ten four hundred account, that is for, um, repairs for the, the roads and, um, blacktop and whatever it takes to operate in the summer.
And that's not chips, right? Chips is?
No, that's a different account.
Is that in DA?
DB fifty one twelve two hundred, I think it is.
Okay, okay, yep, I see it. The next line down, okay. So it looks like, it looks like you're at eighty, just about ninety thousand dollars so far this year on road repairs? For your point four?
Um, I'll take your word for it right now.
That's what it, that's what it came out to in the last, right, by September. So we budgeted two ten. Can we come down some on the budget then on that line?
Um.
If we're at ninety now?
I would not, I would not want to because next year, we're going to try to finish up with the five year plan. It'll be in the sixth year. But again, that is a board decision to do.
Can you tell us, well, actually, yes, it is board decision, but we're obviously looking for you to give us the guidance of what goes on in highway that we don't know. So what is, what's the five year plan? What do you mean you're finishing up? Help us to?
Well, we've been over most of the roads. We still have, I was hoping next year to finish the first, the last course of roads to, um, greater pave and seal what we did this year. I can't give you an exact amount at all because I don't know what the price of blacktop's gonna be or anything like that in the future. But over the years since I've been here, we have done very well. We're starting to reseal roads that we did five years ago. So this will help eventually to cut that expense. We will be in a maintenance mode, not so much in a rebuilding mode.
So I guess, so the eighty eight or the ninety thousand roughly that we've spent this year, is that? Is that?
There is still.
I mean, what's not in there that you, that you?
What's not in there is, um, thirty, forty loads of blacktop that I haven't gotten a bill from Keeler's yet.
And what do you, what do you think that's gonna be roughly?
Fifteen hundred dollars a load times thirty five. Don't hold me, my foot to the fire on it, but that's real close.
So that's thirty thousand?
Fifty three thousand?
About forty five or fifty thousand?
Fifty two five, yep, fifty three.
That's just one of the bills that's outstanding there right now.
Okay, well, any, is there any?
You know.
So that takes us to about a hundred and forty roughly? Are there roads that you didn't get to?
I would like to have done more this year, but again, um, at the last meeting, I felt it was imperative to put the brakes on everything. And it is the middle of September and I think that it would be irresponsible to do anything more. I wanted to work through the streets in Shelby Center, California, Oak, Chestnut, Alabama and those. That was gonna be part of the balance of that. So that's not gonna happen because I don't think it will cure proper between now and the fall. I don't wanna plow it off. I would rather come back in the spring and, and do it then and have the funds available then. So there's that project. There's Blair Road to do. Sanderson Road needs work along with part of Water Works. Let's Road.
But there's only so many man hours, right? Like you must know how many man hours you have and how many roads need to be. You can only, regardless of what needs to be done, only so much can get done.
That's a week's time. We work very well with other municipalities. We pool our resources and when we come in to do a road for them or for us, we get it done.
You know where I'm going. I'm not saying it clearly.
We can do seven miles of chip seal in a day when soup coat comes in. So, um, man hours are really not, you know, a, a big concern for what we have left to do.
So based on this year, next year, how, how, what's the difference in the miles of roads you did this year and what you wanna do next year?
Next year, we will have a very sound financial understanding of what we have and what we can spend. I was shooting blind since the spring.
Understood.
So I'm just going to stop.
I'm not, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm not being clear. I'm not, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm not being clear, not what do you think, what needs to happen, I guess that's where I'm trying to go. How many miles of roads could you do next year, assuming you had an unlimited amount, what, what's the number?
Probably do fifteen, eighteen miles.
Okay.
If I had unlimited funds, I mean, like I said, time is not a big thing, once that paver gets going, it's, you don't want to walk alongside of it.
And what's the cost? What's the cost per mile, roughly?
I don't know exactly, I don't, it depends on how much the road is pitched, because you want to level it back up, so the more that it's crowned, the more material it's gonna take. Um, usually, it takes roughly fifteen to twenty loads a mile.
And that's at the thirty-five dollars of, what did you say the load price was?
Thirty-five. That would be, a ton is seventy-five dollars, so you're looking at easy figuring, twenty dollars a load, fifteen loads. Um, so twenty times seventy-five, the fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a load, so.
So, we don't have, we don't have a rough estimate of our cost per mile, like, so where we were gonna, we could maybe try to figure that out?
No, no, I, I, I would be very amiss to do something like that, I would not want to come up and give you, this is what might cost to repair what roads. Um, everything changes in the spring, you can have the best laid plan right now, but come spring, everything can be a whole lot different because of the winter.
Understood, but I think we need some, something solid to try to budget against, and knowing how many miles and, oh, an average price per road, and we can average on the high side, but it gives us something to say, if we know how many miles we're doing at this, at a price, it gives us a starting point for a budget number.
How much, uh, a mile for the past three years, you ought to have a, some kind of a number, what it's been costing.
Every road's different, every year is different.
Right, so I think what?
But what is the number, though, that's what we're looking for?
Yeah, I think, I think what we?
I just said it's fifteen to twenty loads a mile, at fifteen hundred dollars a load.
How much a mile, though, that's what I've been looking for.
Well, one mile times, or fifteen times fifteen hundred, is fifteen loads roughly in a mile.
So, twenty-two fif, twenty-two thousand five hundred?
Yeah, that's a, that's a fair rough assumption, and that's not counting, it's twenty thousand dollars to chip seal it the next year.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't do well here, I, I'm getting, I need to write it down, so it's, how many loads per mile?
I would estimate anywhere from fifteen to twenty loads a mile.
Per mile, okay.
This year's, it's about fourteen to fifteen hundred dollars a load, seventy-five dollars times twenty-ton.
Okay, so if we did on the high side and said twenty, fourteen hundred times fifteen miles, we're looking at a minimum of three hundred and twenty-one thousand?
Yeah.
Have we ever done that before?
Hmm, close.
Could you, in the future, kind of come up with some kind of standard? I mean, I know every road is different, but just be mindful of what it is, so that you?
It's depending on what the road needs also, we might come in and run a train on it, we might come in and, um, in-place recycle, we might do the greater pave. Uh, uh, it's all kind of dependent on what it needs, if it doesn't have any meat to it, if they do a bore sample, and it's just been oil and stone for a long time, there's no meat to it, you would probably want to do it, um, like we did on a couple of roads, take the millings, you do a cold pave and lay down three and a half inches, and that gets a little expensive, but it gives you product on the road to hold it in place for the future. This coming through here and slapping a little hot mix in a pothole, and then chip sealing it, is a waste of money.
So, here's a thought, that maybe what we do is we come up with a couple averages, right? If we're stone and, and tiring it, or whatever you just said the first thing, then we should be able to get an average price per mile for that, right? If we're actually paving it, then we could, should be able to get it, and then if we can, you know, come budget time, how many miles a road do we think we're gonna do with the stone, and how many miles a road are we gonna do with actually paving? And we should have some averages that give us a starting point. Because I feel like we're kind of just shooting darts at a wall.
Guessing, guessing at it.
Yeah, well, that's, it's a learning experience, so if you can do that in the future.
I'm not guessing in the fall, I guess, well, I guess more in the fall than I do in the spring, I know what a road's gonna need after the winter.
Understood.
So, it's very difficult for me to give you what you're looking for, because what I think we can just do a relatively inexpensive greater pave may end up being a total train job.
That's why we put contingencies in, but we, we, unfortunately, that's on, the, the state doesn't let us budget in the spring, we have to budget in the fall, so we've got to make our best guess.
And I don't get the state money till spring, so, again, it's another issue for me.
You said, you mentioned you had a five-year plan, and you hadn't finished it yet, and we're in year six, is that something that's in writing?
No, it was just something that we had talked about, and it's changed, it's changed a lot in the last few years, just because of what happens throughout the year, not to mention what COVID had done to us, um.
Do you think it would be wise for us to put a plan, you know, with things that you already know that it have to be done? I'm sure there are some roads, you've mentioned a few.
Those are the last ones that we haven't been over.
Yeah, I mean, that would, I think, and we could get some estimate even from that, about what you anticipate that we're gonna run into next year. I understand that when you hit the spring, and depending on what the winter is, but there are some things already that you know that you probably want to tackle.
Well, I do, yes, I do.
Okay, and I'd like to see if we couldn't maybe work together and get something in writing, so that we can, at least?
Stop in the office anytime, and I'll be more than happy to show.
Well, it's something I'd like to come to the board, to, to be in writing.
Well, I will, but I would like to work with you, so I have the information you want.
I'd be happy to sit down, be happy to sit down with you, maybe we can put something together in a plan. Uh, one of my big issues, and I think ongoing, will be, uh, planning and getting it in writing as much as we can. I, I think it's good for the public, and I think it's certainly good for the board, we're not experts in this, and, don't ask me a lot of questions about.
I'm not either, I am not either.
Well, you're, obviously know a lot more about the roads, and about what conditions and the trucks than I do. I work from a plan, though, and I'm gonna rely on you to give us the kind of information that we need, whether it's Linda, Ed, John, myself, so that we can make good decisions where we go with this. Because we're gonna rely on you for that information in order to set these budgets. Uh, as you've already heard, and you certainly have taken notice, we're pretty uncertain about where we stand financially, and not just what the budget says, but I think that Margaret maybe can talk a little bit more about our cash standing, and that's something that's been, quite frankly, difficult to, to ascertain, where are we? Uh, because even if the budget says there's money left in the budget, is there money left in the bank, is, is the problem?
Well, I understand.
Okay, so I think the more we can plan and look ahead, uh, and I'm more than happy to work with you on that, and see if we can't put something in writing. The other question I had, you mentioned just a few minutes ago, that you've got, um, I think Linda guesstimated somewhere around fifty-two K in, in, um, material that, that it's been ordered and hasn't hit the, hit the books yet.
Mm-hmm.
I'd really like to see if there are, are there, what other ones do we have at this point, as we start looking at the budget, if we start looking at cash? What's sitting in the backdrop here that we haven't seen?
There shouldn't be much more as far as for road repair than that, like I said.
And, and that, again, just, I know that there's some in terms of what we're gonna do with the trucks, I don't know all of that has, has gotten funneled through yet, and invoices. I'd really like to see what we got sitting as a, a potential or a liability that has not yet been posted, that we can see, okay? So, maybe we can work on that, too, before the next meeting, and have a pretty good idea.
I can probably give you.
I mean, if it's ten bucks, I don't care, but if it's, you know, fifty-two K, that certainly is.
That's for the blacktop out of my fifty-one-ten, the other expenditures for the trucks come out of my fifty-one-twelve. I can tell you what that answer is.
Well, I think I'd like to, again, let's get together, I'd like to have that in writing, so that we can all share it, can all have it, we can actually work that into our estimates about, uh, how much we've got left, not, again, not just what the budget says, but what we have in order to, actual funds to work with, and in cash, okay? I'd be happy, we'll set up a meeting, I'd be happy to sit down with you and talk to you about some of these things, and we can get them in writing for everybody, because I, to just sit here and just write this down, then I'm not paying attention to what is, is much going on, as I should. I'd like to have it in writing before we actually have the meeting.
Well, I, I think in, in his defense, too, we have to give him the numbers, so that we're all on the same page, absolutely.
John, the numbers, sorry, the numbers that you're seeing on here for year-to-date are the numbers that are on the sheet Dale has.
Yeah.
Those, those printouts that I gave you, they would include these numbers, so just, yeah.
From coming in here and not knowing anything, this is wildly confusing. And anything we can do to minify, minimize that confusion, and make it more orderly, I think, and give, more importantly, give him the numbers, so he knows where he is year-to-date. And our financial reporting system, I think, certainly is much better shaped now than it has been in the past, so hopefully, we can alleviate a lot of these issues, too. And, and one thing about a plan, too, is plans don't always work, it's a good thing to have a plan, but we have to analyze mid-year where we're going with the plan and make adjustments. Like, if the winter is worse than expected, or better, hopefully, then we have more money to spend, too, so. The plan is, uh, I guess what I'm saying is a starting point that is subject to change based on the conditions of, uh, the weather.
So, can I, I'm sorry, can we go back to fifty-one-ten dot four? You're saying Dale two-ten again this year?
I would like that.
Okay. And CHIPS, is that calculated? The CHIPS money, is that calculated in the past, has it been calculated based on the miles of roads that we have? Or what's been, how did they come up with two hundred and forty thousand?
That is not the precise number, um, I put that in my budget last year. CHIPS is kind of a broad range, there's four components to CHIPS. There's CHIPS itself, Consolidated Highway Improvement Program, something like that. There's EWR, Extreme Winter Recovery, there's the Pave New York, and then there's POP, Pave Our Potholes. Each one is allocated, um, a number, a value. And every year, we go to Albany to lobby for them to hopefully increase our payments, which is based on what you have in the town. So, I always kind of underestimate what I'm gonna get, now, this year, by May, they had the budget for the state of New York, and we went from, we added sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars to what we had the year before, and we ended up with two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and some change.
I'm sorry, we received two seventy-six?
We don't receive it, we get it back. We have to spend it, we have to do something.
Yeah, but they, yes, but we receive it, we, we will receive a check back from them for two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Correct, correct, it's a wash program, but you never know what they're gonna give you, because it's a four-component program. During their negotiations, they like to use certain things for hostage, as far as, well, we'll cut this and save money. And, so you don't know until April, May, what you're gonna get, so I always underestimate my CHIPS. But now that Margaret has the official letter from the state of New York, she can adjust that column to reflect the two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six and seventy-some cents. What will it be next year? I'm hoping it's gonna be the same, but we won't know until the state does the budget, they might just, we're not gonna fund POP anymore. The biggest component of those four is CHIPS.
So, we're gonna spend the CHIPS for whatever reason, for the roads, and what if they do cut back, then we're gonna cover the expense?
Well, that's why I don't put the full amount in my budget line. But once I get the letter.
Oh, you know, they, they may not give you anything, they may cut it fifty percent, you don't know.
They won't, they won't do that, I'm pretty sure the state's not that.
I'm not sure.
Well, in all the years, they've never cut fifty percent, they might, they've added programs, and they've added small into it, they have never cut a program.
Didn't, didn't you say part of it was based on extreme weather?
That's what they call it, Extreme Winter Recovery.
And is it safe to say that we had a bad winter, and that you could expect that to go up, or it doesn't work that way?
No, it, it, it's possible, but that extra money that we needed for what we did came from that Supplement B with the New York State DOT, that we passed a resolution to, you know. So, I take that paperwork back to Albion, they submit it, then that check will be put in with, um, our mowing and plowing contract. The county pays us to plow and mow their roads.
Putting in for CHIPS this year, what's your estimate?
I was gonna put in two hundred and fifty thousand.
So, you're putting ten thousand more than last year?
Well, we had received quite a.
Yeah, but you got two hundred and seventy-six, right, is that?
I don't think they're gonna cut it that much, that way, there's eight hundred and some munis that go down there, and, um, we are the largest owners of roads in the state. So, I don't think the governor is really that, uh, they'll use it as a threat, but they have never cut fifty percent, ten percent, they just might not add anything. But when you figure out how they do things, let me know.
Weren't they considering cutting quite a lot last year, and at the last minute, they came back and just decided not to?
They weren't gonna cut a lot, they were basically gonna keep it zeroed out, you know, percentage-wise, but then, um, you know, Senator Ort and all of them fought hard for us, and they ended up giving us, I believe it was sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars extra.
Can I? Can I just ask that, maybe we could insert Margaret, because I was just thinking, we probably should have started with her, so she can leave, as opposed to, and she also can add some value probably to what we're hearing here, and whether we think we can move forward with the same estimates, can you just give us a little breakdown on the cash and fund balance? Yes, you'll have, you have to go up there, yes, so that, no, Dale's?
No, I've got just a couple more sheets.
He's got a couple more, but I think what we hear from you could help us with what we do with Dale.
Good evening, good evening, can you hear me? Okay, yes, now you can, okay. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about a budget in total, because a lot of people don't know what goes into making a budget, and a budget is a law. So, once the budget is passed by the voters, that becomes law, and you have to follow the budget in order to stay within the law. Now, a lot of people will talk about, in fact, Dale was just talking about, well, I'll roll this over to next year. That's, that's not how it, how it works. Well, the CHIPS is a little different, because it's a different, um, but, you know, when you have, um, a little bit extra in this budget line, or that budget line, each budget year stands on its own, so you really can't roll things over, and chances are, you're going to have little deficits in other places, so wherever there were, there was extra, it'll probably be eaten up by the, the shortfall in the other lines. So, generally speaking, each budget year stands on its own, and that's what's supposed to happen. When you do a budget, you should never be counting on money that you've had in the past to roll forward. It all should be able to be handled within the year. So, the town board will get together, and with the help of its, um, employees, determine what their expenses are going to be for the next year, which is what we're trying to do here. And at that point, they know, Dale knows his CHIPS, there's other grants and things that come in, and after those are taken off the top, then the rest is left for the taxpayers to pay. So, it's, it's not a magic formula, it's, this is what it's going to cost us to run the town of Shelby this year, we are going to get whatever we're going to get from, whatever government we're going to get it from, what other, other government, we're going to get. government we're going to get it from, what other, other government we're going to get it from, and then the rest comes out of the taxpayers' pockets. So that's what you really need to know about a budget. And when you're looking at the end of the year, and you see a fund balance, you, that is not the same as cash, because, now I have to give you an accounting lesson, are you ready? Okay. So, on the left side are debits, and those are assets. And on the right side, you have liabilities and fund balance. So the liabilities and fund balance altogether have to equal the assets. But now, not all your assets are cash. You might have accounts receivable, and you do have infrastructure that is also an asset, so that's, that's not cash. In fact, it really probably will never turn into cash unless you sell, like you talk about selling maybe some of the equipment that Dale has, those assets can turn into cash, but other than that, you have to wait till they're, they're, they're done, and then you're going to get whatever you can get for them. So it's important to know, when you see fund balance, that doesn't mean that there's cash in the account, okay? Now, when I have looked at the budget and all of the cash accounts that the town has, at this point in time, it looks as if there is ample cash to cover the expected expenses. Now, when I say expected expenses, that means what's left in the budget. So if things go over budget, then we're going to have to really take a look, but I, I feel very confident in saying that the town has enough cash to pay for the budget, budgeted expenses for this year. However, last year's budget tried to ta, was taking money from the prior year and putting it into this year's budget, in the 2025 budget, and we're trying to avoid doing that, because that's really not how it's supposed to go. All right, it, does, did that help? Yes, okay, good, well, there I, there, my job is done.
All right, John, one other quick thing I think is important for Margaret to explain, using fund balance or cash that we already have to cover normal operating expenses in a given year.
Yes, yes.
Can you explain the dangers of that?
Of using your cash?
Y, y, yeah, like, taking cash out of what we have and putting it towards our tax, you know, to reduce that.
Right, 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 well, first of all, I don't know that that's, well, that isn't the proper way to do a budget. Every year is supposed to stand on its own, just like I said, you know, fun, you can't, you really can't carry money over, because it'll all be used i, in the end. Excuse me. It should come, it should be a wash, it should be a wash. If you happen to have a little bit of extra cash on hand, you can appropriate that in your, for a future fund balance, but for a specific purpose. So for instance, if Dale wants to buy a special lawn mower that he can't afford this year, and there's money left in the budget at the end, then you can say, well, all right, I am going to appropriate this amount of fund balance, but it's specifically for that mower that Dale wants, or that's been identified. It can't just be for whatever comes up in the future. It, it should be something that is specific. And so when, because, well, and it's no different than a not-for-profit, they do the same thing, but they have specific projects that they want to work on, same thing here. Okay? Yes?
Could I ask you?
Oh, yes, there was a gentleman here that wanted to ask. Oh, you might have to, come on up.
I may have misunderstood what you said, my name's Mark Wambach, but I think you said that there's sufficient cash to handle all the budgeted things for this year.
Yes, that's correct.
But my understanding is, we're already over where we're supposed to be with the legal budget, for example. And so how does that fit with what you just said?
Good question.
That is an excellent question, thank you for bringing that up. There is, there was cash in the accounts before the year started. So, the cash that was in the accounts before the year started was the budget money that came in, the tax dollars came in, and so it provided a little bit higher of a pot. So the cash was there to pay it, and we've had to make budget transfers in order to make that happen, and we have done that. But we don't have a lot of room left to do any more of that, a lot more of that. And so that's why we really have to be careful, and we have to think about, the budget is for that year, and we have to make sure that all the expenditures are appropriately estimated so that the budget is real. And then you really know, then Dale will know, he, I know this year, he didn't have, he didn't know, you know, what was in the budget and what isn't. Okay, well, so now you have the opportunity to participate in this and put your numbers in, so you will know, and everybody should know, what is in their budget, so that they can make good decisions as they go.
So, so technically, what you're supposed to do when you go over in one line, another line has to give up something to cover, because each, should not overspend. For that year, yes.
Mr. Mark, again, I feel like there's a little more to the answer that I'm missing. So are you assuming that for the rest of this year, for example, with the legal expenses, we're gonna stay within what's expressed, predicted for the budget for the rest of the year? That there will not be big expenditures like we've been experiencing so far?
Well, the horse is out of that shed already, you know, we've already overspent what's in the budget. And the only way to fix that is what Linda said, basically, we have to move money from other places and put it into those lines. So whatever extra, but again, we're not talking about fund balance, we're talking about cash. So there was cash available from the prior year, and that's what we're using then. So the budget will probably, will probably still show overages in some lines, but altogether, it can't, it has to equal zero. Yes? No, maybe? I, he's, I, I don't know that I can answer your question.
Mark, so for the A Fund, where we have legal fees, right? We are over in our legal fees by $50,000. That means some other line, or multiple lines in that fund, are gonna give something up, so that at the total at the bottom of the A Fund, if we said we were gonna spend $937,000, that's all we should be spending. If we go over that, what Margaret's saying is, we do have a little bit of cash left that we could cover in overage, but we should not be going over, like, there's gonna, there should be cuts made, and we'll do everything we can to, to make that happen, but sometimes you can't, once you go over, sometimes you can't help that it's gonna carry to the bottom.
Well, and if you remember what I talked about at the beginning, the budget is the law. So basically, if you go over that budget at the end, you're breaking the law. Did you have a question, John?
My, my question, I was gonna ask you, if there's money left over, could that money from Dale's budget, could it go into an accrual account for equipment? Or do you have to specify what equipment you're gonna get?
Well, I, I think it's best, always best to put it into, it, that wouldn't be in, and that wouldn't be in his regular budget line, I don't think. I think that would be in appropriated fund balance. I think that's something that we really have to look into a little bit more, because you can't just, you can put in a contingency, contingency part of the budget, but I don't think that's what you're really trying to do. I think if you're trying to take some extra money that you have, you, it's almost like a reserve account, that's, and it's called appropriated fund balance. And then that way, you take that, again, fund balance isn't always money, so you have to make sure you have the money to back it up, and put it over into that appropriated fund balance, because that's restricted, and it's only to be used for the purpose for which it was appropriated.
Okay.
Jim?
Yeah, in talking about cash.
Yes.
We have, you say, enough cash in the New York class investments and?
And all the other funds.
And all the other funds.
Mm-hmm.
To suffice to, to cover the budget as it is.
Yes, and I think we had more, a little bit extra, not tons, but just a little bit, enough, enough to be comfortable with me saying that, let's put it that way.
And, I mean, enough to go into next year and feel like?
Like you're in the money?
No. But we have some cushion, is all I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay.
Linda, did you share that report with Jim, that John had provided to you?
Yeah, uh, I think, I know I shared it with the board, I'm not sure if Jim.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's, there's a piece of paperwork flying around, but we'll, we'll pick it up for you and make sure that, and we'll update it.
And I'd like to sit down with you at some point, too, and go through it.
Absolutely.
You know, reading it, and then spending some time with somebody who really knows what it is, is, is two different things.
Yes.
But I, you know, going through this, at this point, you know, the cash has always been my concern.
Yes.
You know, and with the overspending on certain areas, I was very concerned that we were gonna run into a brick wall here. So it makes me feel a little better that you're saying, with your analysis, that we're gonna be okay, not rich, but we're gonna be okay.
Not rich.
And that, I mean, the whole.
Unless some unforeseen, something comes up, I mean, that isn't in the budget, that, you know, you gotta know if lightning struck, although there'd be insurance proceeds for that, so.
Hopefully, yeah, absolutely.
Do we, at every meeting, have those cash funds available? Is that listed?
There's supposed to be a supervisor report that shows the cash in and outs, and I know that's a sore subject for many years. Really, not much has happened, because we haven't been able to do anything, because we have not had a board. So, starting next month, we will be able to have those again, because I know that it is, you know, that, you know, $10,000 question, you know, are there gonna be supervisor reports?
And, and that will include, and that will include our cash status, is that correct?
Yeah, that is, the supervisor report is the cash, it starts with your beginning balance, your ins and outs, and your ending balance, yes.
Okay, just so everybody understands, it's not just year-to-date budget numbers.
Right, no, 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 it is cash.
How much money is in there to pay the bills?
It's cash, mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
It's the old saying, cash is king.
Yes, cash is king, mm-hmm, absolutely, I like to say that. Well, if you need me, I'll stay. No? Okay.
What days are you here?
I don't have specific days, but I will have to come back, because the board has approved the payment, so I'm going to have to come back to do checks. I have to look at my calendar, what day works best for me this week, and I can be in contact with you about that.
If, if we could, I, I'm getting retired and finding a new job now, I guess I've got some time to.
Well, good, good.
Spend, sit down with you, because I've, you know, as much reading as I said that I've done, I would like to understand, if I'm gonna be signing my name to these supervisors' report, I'd like to make sure that I know what I'm signing.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
And one last comment, it's our intent to make sure that we comply with every law, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, it's refreshing to hear.
You're very welcome, sure.
So, just, it needs to be put out there, what we were doing for the last eighteen months and two years.
John?
No, I, it just was not online, what we were doing here.
I, I'm not understanding that question.
What we were doing here in Shelby with our money, the way it was being run for the last two years, was not on board, the way we should've been doing it.
I don't, I would not say that it was not on board, I would just say that no one was really properly reconciling the bank accounts.
Thank you, that's all I think the best.
Okay, but there has been a lot of time and effort into the last couple of years, in '23 and '24, to get that caught up, and we are continuing that.
And we're not looking in the rearview mirror, we're looking ahead, so.
No. Right, 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 it's, oh, you're very welcome, but it, it's been a, I'm not going to make pretend it hasn't been a challenge, because it has been, but, you know, we're ready for it. Okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm back.
DA 5140?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
That's my brush and weed. So for personnel, I was requesting, I just averaged it up to $7,000. And I believe the 200 account would be where you might want to put any funds for the mowing tractor, if you choose to.
And that would be the roughly 14, 150?
Um, if you wanted to buy brand-new, yeah. That was the estimate that I was asked to get, was replacement costs.
And I'm sorry, what did you say you thought we could get a used one for?
I would say somewhere's around 80,000.
Okay.
And then the 400 account, that is where we have the mower, you know, the cemetery mowing contract, where we buy supplies for foundations, things that we need between May and August, which would also be the porta-potties that we have in each one, the main ones. I believe the current contract would, could be renewed for 2%.
On the mowing, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
He's done a very good job, very thoughtful, even though he's already done it the week before, it's a holiday, he'll do it all again.
Can we back up to the payroll there for a minute? Does that look like there's something wrong, right? We, somehow we must have put payroll in another category, because that's only saying we've spent $1,400 on mowing?
I think some of it was put over into the 5110 personnel.
Okay.
I spoke to Margaret, or Eva, or Sarah, one time about that. I was gone, and somebody did payroll, that was just one incident, and it, and I think that is easily a bookkeeping.
Yeah, we could fix that.
Move it A to B.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure, like, that they're clearly, that we put something somewhere else, okay? 5142?
Yep. DA 5142, my personnel, this is for my winter.
Snow removal, John.
Snow removal. I am asking for $165,000. There's a 3% increase on the MEO's contract, with a base of 12,600 and, or 126,880. And then the overtime protection, I wanted for 800 hours, and that would be a cost of 36,600. Add it together, round it up just a little bit to 165, because I believe right now, there's $300 in it.
So how does it, my, my question on that is that, in that line, at least to date, you've spent everything that's in there, what happens when it comes to snow plowing in December? Does that come out of something else?
Yeah, we'll probably just have to stay on the 5110.
Okay. And maybe I missed it, what's, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we can't leave it on, well, we can't leave it on 5110, because that's a different tax base.
Right.
So it has to stay there. What we would have to do is either give up something else in that category, in that fund, or we'd have to see if the A Fund had any money to move, because that's the same tax base.
Right.
But I'm not sure A's gonna have any, because that's where legal sits.
Yep. Yep.
So we're gonna have a bit of a problem there that we're gonna have to look at.
As far as the, uh, two hundred account or the two-ten, again, I guess that would be up to the board. I really don't, outside of the used spreader I'm interested in buying, I really don't have much to ask for in twenty-six.
For, um.
To put any money away to buy anything.
Point two?
The point two and the two-ten. But it probably would not hurt to start accruing some money.
Yep. Um, Dale, can you, um, can we go back to, to one we already covered a little bit, machinery contractual?
Where are you?
Just up a couple lines, fifty-one thirty point four?
Fifty-one thirty?
Oh, yeah, fifty, DA fifty-one thirty point four, so that's in the same fund where your snow plowing is. So if we're, if we budgeted a hundred and we're only at fifty-one, how much more spending, or can you stop spending there and we can use that forty-eight thousand dollars to cover salaries for snow plowing?
Um.
Or some of it, maybe you don't need it all.
Well, yeah, that's why I said I, I stopped. After the last meeting, I just stopped. We're not doing any more paving. Um, I'm not trying to buy any more parts or other than the absolute necessary for filters and oil to service the trucks for the winter. I have to buy a few tires for one truck, so no, I don't, I'm trying very hard not to spend it down.
Yeah, okay.
So that could cover us on that.
A DA can be moved into a DA, yes.
Yeah.
What I, what I, the other thing I would wonder is, we have the equipment reserve, what I don't know is, should I ask Margaret while she was here? Can we use some of that equipment reserve or no? If we didn't, if we just called it that, just to call it that, we might be able to use it, but if we, it's an official reserve account?
As far as I know, nothing was attached to it.
Yeah, we might be able to use some of that.
That has nothing to do with the new truck?
Not what's left in that equipment reserve, right Dale? That's, that came out of?
Um, one moment, the fifty-one thirty two-ten.
Yep.
Um, there was to be a hundred and forty-eight thousand taken out for the, um, components, for the Henderson plow components to be installed on the new truck.
On the twenty-six or twenty-five?
Twenty-six.
Okay, so it looks like she put that in fifty-one thirty point two, is the, where she took the truck itself?
The resolution has two-ten. That's where the two-sixty-seven is.
Okay, so we might, we, we just have to look at those, fixing those two possibly. Okay. But between those two lines, we might have some extra that we can use.
So the four hundred account is, um, expenses, um, some snow plow parts. Salt is our biggest contributor. I have, I'm guessing, but I did the measurements, I have somewhere's around five hundred ton of salt to start, which is not much.
What do you go through roughly in a, and when you say five hundred tons, what's a?
I would probably go through, last year, I think it was close to twenty-five hundred ton.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that number Dale? Five?
I think I have close to five hundred ton out there.
And you think you went through what roughly in the last one?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five, okay, sorry.
That's our state bid, um, amount, that's our OGS amount.
That's what you can buy up to?
Yeah, and there's a certain percentage I can go over without, um, inflicting any price change.
So you may have enough to cover December if it isn't too bad. I know it's a guess.
I'm hoping.
But I'm just saying, you don't have, that, that fund is exhausted, so.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully the five hundred gets us through without having.
Well, and it's not a huge part of the problem, but part of the problem last year when the salt mine ran out of salt, OGS was shipping salt in from whatever areas they could find it. We did not have to pay over what the OGS price was, but they ended up shipping three hundred and fifty ton over of what I asked for, because it just turned into a clown show with trucks going everywhere dumping stuff.
So it does look like we budgeted a, a straight number of one-seventy, but we're trying to break that out. It looks like we've spent a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars so far? Would you, would you expect roughly the same amount next year?
I don't think that number's right. It seems like when we got done with the end of the year in the spring, I have it in my head, it was around twelve thousand dollars left, so I would need to look at the sheet of what was billed to that account.
Okay, so I'm sorry Dale, I, I, I probably was confusing.
Yep.
Out of the one-seventy, we, we've separated it by invoices to have, to have purchased a hundred and thirteen thousand of salt and forty-five thousand of other, I don't know what makes the other.
You got a hundred and thirty-seven here for salt.
Okay, well that might be a little different than when I ran this, I could have done this before those reports were updated. So, we're trying to break the two lines out, and is fuel a big portion in snow plowing too?
Yes.
Okay, so we should probably try to break that line out too, so we have something to measure against?
My, because Pump Doctor hasn't worked in years, I usually take a portion of that four hundred account and I'll fill the tank for the summer. I was explaining this to John earlier. And then with the end of summer, I take money from the fifty-one-ten and try to fill the tank back up for the winter. So we start full, then you have a good idea what you spent, um, gallon-wise, the plow snow, because that's the predominant ninety-five percent of the diesel fuel is for the plow trucks in the winter. I was asking for a hundred and seventy-five thousand there, because I would really like to start getting, um, a surplus in the salt barn, so we're not starting the year on bare basics.
So you're asking, you're saying a hundred and seventy thousand?
Hundred and seventy-five I would like to ask for.
And are you saying that is in the four and the four oh one, is, are you?
The four hundred. The fifty-one forty-two four hundred is my expenses.
And you're asking, you want a hundred and seventy?
Hundred and seventy-five.
And budgeted last year was fifty-six?
No, one-seventy.
One-seventy?
Yeah. It, it, we tried to split it up, Margaret tried to split it up to.
So you're combining, excuse, just so I'm sure.
Those two should roll up, yes.
That's what I'm asking, is that you're asking for a hundred and seventy-five for those two, total, okay.
Total. Yeah. Dale, you said something about fuel, is that, when you buy it, does it get charged to one, uh, one account?
It's either the fifty-one forty-two four hundred or fifty-one-ten four hundred.
And that's when you purchase, or as you use it, like, do you?
I try to fill the tank and we don't have to buy anymore, is a rule. But last year we ended up having to buy more.
And we, and, and I'm sorry, we decide, if you fill the tank for six thousand gallons, what, what is it, like, per gallon, three?
I don't know, I'll have to call and get the current price, but three bucks, three and a quarter.
So we're talking like eighteen thousand dollars to fill it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, the only reason I'm asking is because, again, those two accounts are in two different tax bases. One is a whole town and one is an outside town, so I just wanna make sure that we're kinda allocating. Okay.
That's what I had sheets for.
I don't, I, I didn't see any other accounts Dale, I didn't miss anything, right, when I gave you the sheets?
The only other ones I don't have is the, um, A account
Oh.
with, um.
Building, do you do something in building, or is?
Well, that needs to be, um, determined by the board.
So he's on A's?
Yeah, the sixteen twenty-four hundred, um, I was given a sheet, I gave it back to John today because I'm very uncomfortable, because I have no history of the expenditures to this, this building. Um, seems like a lot of times I'm in charge when I don't know why.
So it's either you or the supervisor, right?
Yep.
Okay, that's.
So who does, who does the maintenance on the building Dale, like, if something breaks, do we call somebody, or do your guys try to?
Depends on what it is, we try to do some in-house.
Okay.
And if it's, we're busy and it's past our, we hire a contractor.
Okay.
Now, one line here that I believe I am responsible for is the, uh, A fifty-ten one hundred. I'm not asking for anything more. The A fifty-one-ten two hundred.
Hold on Dale, fifty-ten one hundred, that's you, okay.
Yep.
And what was the next one?
The two hundred.
Highway equipment, yep.
I'll keep it at the twelve hundred dollars.
Okay.
And then my fifty-ten four hundred, that's my conferences and schools and that, um, I would like to ask for forty-five hundred dollars as those costs have, have increased, I'm sure Darlene can attest to the fact that.
Do you have a list of, like, the conferences that are coming up that you're looking to go to?
I have one later this month. There's one in the spring when we go to Albany for lobbying days, and then there's the school in Ithaca in the summer.
Training, ongoing training?
Yes, yeah, there's legal, um, times, and then there's how we, how to do a better job fixing roads, new, new products that are out there. And then the, um, cemetery, the eighty-eight-ten one hundred in the A account. If we could keep that at the sixteen. And then the, uh, eighty-eight-ten four hundred, I make contractual for the cemetery, I would like to keep at the ten. So we tried very hard to keep it, um, zero increase, but it's inevitable.
So we clearly have a prob, I'm sorry Ed, we clearly have a problem in the eighty-eight-ten one hundred, because that says we've only used six hundred dollars worth of salaries.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
Yes, um, that would be close, but again, I would like to go back through my, um, payroll sheets to make sure that it was, um, given to the right account.
Yep, okay. Sorry Ed, go ahead.
So that, if, if that's the case, that it got put to the wrong account, then something else is gonna go down, but that.
Well, we have them, there's apparently some funds there that if I can reduce that account, it would put more money back in the D or the DB to help pay off, um, payroll on those for the future.
And we are all under the, we, we do all understand, right, we're putting things where they belong, not whether there's room in the budget.
Yeah, that's why I wanna talk to who has those payroll sheets, and I wanna review them again.
Okay, um, can you tell me what goes into cemetery contractual?
Pallets of concrete, the poor foundations, um, I don't normally break parts or fuel out of there because it's relatively miniscule. If I need a piece of equipment, like when we bought the power auger to help dig cremation holes, that would come out of that. If we need lumber for building forms, it would come out of that, if we need grass seed.
Do the power auger, that's a one-time purchase pretty much, right?
Well, yeah.
I wrote, I have written down, and maybe I misunderstood, under brush and weed, I wrote down that we had, um, cemetery mowing and foundations under.
That's the contracted, or contracted, the, um, sunshine. When we go in there to work, um, like, we're gonna go in there and cut limbs, dead trees, dead limbs down, that would, um, be used for personnel. We're gonna try to do a week or two straightening stones, fixing stones and pouring new foundations on stones that have fallen over, we will not get them all done, no.
So I'm just curious why we wouldn't budget all of cemetery in one account, like, in the cemetery account, like, anything we do in the cemetery, whether it's contractual or, is, do you know, is there a reason why we?
That would be up to, uh, you to do that, yes.
Okay, but you don't know of any reason in the, in your past budgeting.
That's the way they had done it before.
Dale, as I look at those lines on the cemetery, uh, we put in sixteen, and even if there's a mistake with the labor that came up with six hundred and twenty-two, which we know is right.
We did not do what I was hoping we could do.
Right.
I was, um.
The, the years prior to that were, you know, eight and, eight thousand in, in twenty-twenty-three, uh, nine thousand roughly in twenty-twenty-four, we put sixteen in, even with the modification.
We were hoping to do a lot more work that we just didn't have a chance to get to. All I can do is somewhat budget for what I think we can get done in the year.
So I, I think the key is, Jim, we should, we should know what the salaries are for the MEOs, right, and then add all the point ones up and make sure that they tie, where they kinda go is, you know.
And then in the contractual too, you're right, if we've got contractual someplace else for another, somebody else to do some mowing, we should have it all in cemetery, if that's what their contract.
Then we know what the cemetery cost us.
Yeah. Because right now, I, I find it hard, you know, you gotta go back and forth between two accounts.
Yeah.
Two locations.
Yep.
So when you do a repair like that, do, does the town eat the cost, or do you kind of charge whomever's, the family that owns that plot?
If we do a new foundation, it's charged to the monument company that charges the family. We kinda eat that. Oh, there's mountains of repairs to do, stones that have fallen, foundations that have crumbled. Look at the first couple rows on Millville Cemetery, you'll see where they've.
Are those, but those are, those would be ones that were in years ago, right, like, now, now you put in like a, a three footer, footer, so that the stones, they're not, okay. So the older ones, we're gonna just have that issue, okay.
You want Margaret's paperwork here?
Oh, did she leave something? Yeah, we can leave, we can give it to Darlene and she.
Okay, so what is the next step now?
So, we would probably follow up with Darlene and go through what hers are, get numbers from the judge on what his are, and then we start putting everything together, and then I'll rerun this information in a format that'll tell us, like, what we have, and then the new supervisor will work on getting the revenue numbers put together. And, um, and then we'll, what we wanna do is fill this whole sheet in, all of these columns, and then we sit down and we look at, here's what the tax rate would be.
Is that something that we're gonna discuss on?
Then we start cutting.
On the twenty-ninth?
Um, we can, but I think it's gonna take another meeting probably to, because we got a lot of holes still.
Well, the, the biggest expenses are gonna be retirement and medical and those things, which, when do you find out what they're gonna be?
So I saw a, a article that came out from this, I'm sorry, I, I think so Dale.
Okay, cuz this.
Yeah.
Here's the information you were looking for last week. They wanted the cost of replaced equipment, and there's, there's quotes in there. And there's the inventory sheet, years of the.
Yeah, I didn't mean to do it like right away. Well, then we might by the next scheduled county meeting.
Monday.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Um, Dale, we reserve the right to call you back at another meeting.
And we, and we do appreciate the effort that you put in too, Dale, thank you.
Thanks Dale.
Yep, thank you.
So John, you can see, the, the first two pages here of the A, we haven't even touched yet. So there's one page, one page of revenues, and then there's, a lot of the A fund is board slash supervisor budgeting that has to happen, Darlene has a few lines in there.
All right, well.
Pretty much what we just did with Dale covers those, and then water.
All right, well, let's get going, because it's ten to eight, and I'm sensitive. All right, well, let's get going because it's ten to eight and I'm sensitive about keeping people here, so.
Darlene, you wanna go through?
I'm gonna make this really quick because I don't have a big budget like Dale does. Anyways, um, my clerk, um, budget.
Can you give us the account numbers too?
Yep, um, oh, under the, um, ah, A fourteen-ten.
Okay.
Uh, the point two?
Yep.
No, I'm sorry, point one. It's Personnel Services. I just took my deputy, deputy and I and, and multiplied by three percent. And I have my deputy divided up between clerk and, um, records. And so part of her hours are gonna be on the records and the other part is gonna be in deputy with mine. And so my total on the clerk, A fourteen-ten, is gonna be seventy-four thousand, seven ninety-six and five cents. And then the contractual expenses, um.
Darlene, did you just get point two? Any equipment?
I'm not anticipating any equipment. I did buy, get a printer last year, so I think that's good. And I don't think I'm up for any updates or anything with the software, so I'm good, um, with my computers. Um, so we ju, we go down to the four-hundred, the, um, fourteen-ten-point-four-hundred. Um, for meals, I've got the Association of Municipalities, which is a meeting every, um, well, usually eight or ten times a year. Um, and it's basically twenty-five dollars. Clerk meetings that we hold, we have to pay for our meals. Um, so I budgeted four-hundred dollars for that. Um, the mileage, um, post office, bank, uh, conferences, or my conference rather, to Albany usually this, Albany this year, is one thousand dollars. Um, the, the Albany Conference, um, for registration and motel is one thousand. Lake Country Media, I don't know really, um, there's, might be only a couple things a year that I would put in the, uh, Lake Country Media. Most of that would be like, um, planning board or zoning board notices, so that would fall under, there'd be B funds. So, um, but I did a hundred dollars just because in case there was something I didn't remember.
How much does an ad cost us Darlene?
It depends on how big it is. Um, if we wanted to have a border around it and, um, it's usually a, a two-column, maybe two and a half, three inches long, it's usually around a hundred and thirty, five hundred and forty dollars. Um, my, my, my software for the clerk program is Williamson Law and it is twenty-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Um, supplies, toner, everything from CHPC, um, I put in two thousand for that. Um, I know that last year it said hun, uh, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-five, but my, my printer seems to use a lot of toner. And I, of course, I've been doing a lot more copying.
And you're talking the one on your desk, not the big one? And that one on your desk, do you normally print black and white? Or is, does it only do color?
It does both, but I usually try to print in black and white.
Okay. And the, um, when you say supplies, that's not office supplies like pens, paper?
No.
Paper, it's just toner supplies for your printer?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and then my, um, NISTICA membership, that's done with dues. And I know there's a line in our budget for dues, for municipal dues, it's like nineteen-twenty point something. And the A fund, let's see.
Yeah, nineteen-twenty point four.
Okay, and so that's where my dues for the membership would be, and that's eighty-five dollars for the NISTICA membership. And then I'm a member of the, um, inter, inter-municipal I, IMC program. And that is a hundred and eighty-five dollar dues a year. And again, that would fall under the nineteen-twenty point four. It would also fall with the Association of Towns, um, and that's usually, I think, a thousand or twelve-hundred a year. I can't remember which it was, but that's good to have the membership for the Association of Towns. Uh, they're very supportive. Um, and then tolls for any regionals or classes I go to, and I put in for a twenty dollars on the ad. Um, and then we skip over to records.
Dar, I'm sorry Darlene, do you have a total for that, for the clerk contractual, the point four?
Um.
Fourteen-ten-point-four?
Fourteen-ten-point-four, um, yeah, seven thousand five hundred and forty.
Okay.
And then for records, I put in ten hours every pay period for the deputy. And like I said, I put three percent on her, um, wage. Right now she's making twenty dollars and sixty cents. So it figured out to twenty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. So, um, that would bring, bring her up to, um, for the records, it would be eleven thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty cents. And that's all I've got for, um, records. Uh, we don't need anything in the records department, so that one is done. My registrar, that is birth, death and, um, birth, death and marriages. And that's, uh, um, B forty-twenty-point-one.
Hold on Darlene. Yep.
Okay, so death certificates and birth certificates that we do, uh, we get ten dollars per certificate. Um, and what the state, uh, and it's something done by the state. The state says, you know, this is what you're gonna get. So a few years ago, we did a stipend instead of getting, you know, ten dollars per certificate. In some years it would be over the ten dollars or the, the amount of money, um, they just made it stipend. So in January, the first check, I would get six hundred dollars for the stipend to do all the births and deaths, um, for the year. And the deputy gets three hundred dollars because if I'm not available, she can also do the births and deaths herself. So anyways, that's nine hundred dollars and that's just kind of a given stipend that, you know, is divided up. The town clerk gets six hundred and then the deputy gets three hundred. And then for the tax account, which is, um, item A thirteen-thirty, um, I do not get a salary for that. It's included in, in the, um, oh, town clerk report because I do clerk and tax. So the clerk, um, budget, um, also covers the tax. Um, for meals on the tax, um, it's the one that's thirteen-thirty-point-four-hundred. Um, meals, I put a hundred dollars. Um, and the, the mileage and tolls, that's for, um, conference and that's five hundred dollars. Um, the conference is a thousand dollars. Lake Country Media, I know that I put in, um, legal notices for budget and taxes. So I estimated it two hundred and fifty for those. My software program for the clerk account is Bass. And, um, and actually I have the number twenty, uh, two thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. However, um, there's five percent added onto that. When I called them, they sent me the wrong, um, pa, paper. So I had to add five percent on the, um, bill. So it brings it up to two thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents for my software for the, uh, tax collection. Um, my NISTICA or my New York State Tax Receiver membership, again, uh, that would be on with the dues, uh, membership for the town, but that's fifty dollars. But with everything together, um, that totals four thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. So mainly the, the biggest thing is just the personnel. I mean, there's nothing that I can think of that I'm gonna need, um, in the next year. Um, I, I believe our, our, um, computers are all okay for this year. Um, I do wanna say though, that in two years I am gonna retire. Um, I would like to definitely get somebody in that I could start training. Um, I did not put it in the budget this year. I would kinda like to do a, a part-time girl, um, and then have the full-time girl. But, um, I just wanna have a smooth transition so that when I retire, whoever picks up the job can actually carry it on like I have and it'll be a smooth transition because there's a lot to learn to be a town clerk. So, um, it, it, I, I just don't know if it's gonna run smooth 'cause it's kinda late now. But just saying that, that I wanna put it out there, I am gonna retire in two years. And, um, we're gonna need to get somebody in here that hopefully can do the job.
What kind of a like procedure manual kinda do you have? Is there anything that's documented for the, the bigger things that? You know, I know there's a lot of one-off things that happen just when somebody walks in, but like how to, how to mail out, you know, how to do the taxes and, and how to collect them and the, the process that's used? You know how Margaret gave it to you for the accounting stuff?
I have not done that. Um, my, the way the town clerks learn is networking. And I know that the clerk in Albion, brand new, is of about a month ago, um, because her, the town clerk left. So a deputy clerk who'd only been there for a couple days is now the town clerk. And so, um, the town clerk from Murray is over helping the town clerk from Albion to learn the job. And that's, that's part of the networking with the clerks, you go to other towns and help them learn. Um, I have a tax book that I started out with eighteen years ago and anything in there is not right. Software changes, um, things changed with the county, so it would kinda not really be beneficial to do that. It's better to learn as you go. So, and let them take the, their own notes.
Yeah, I honestly, I would, maybe not this year, but I would, I would, I would like to entertain the thought of maybe there are people that will come in and document jobs. If it, if we can't do it because the job is too busy now, we might wanna look at having somebody come in and do that because I, I don't, you know, every town could do things, some things a little different. And honestly, I personally don't feel it's up to another town to come in and train our people.
I guess my feelings are, we better decide how much money we have and what we're gonna do before we make added personnel.
Oh yeah, and I'm not saying that in twenty-six, but if she's leaving in twenty-seven, we might wanna consider trying to find some room in a budget to have the, the clerk and deputy's jobs documented so that somebody has a starting point because.
Are you talking for twenty-twenty-six or?
Twenty-seven. I know that's above you, I know.
Let's not, let's just focus on twenty-twenty-six.
For Jim to think about.
Well, it's, it's an elected position too, so just hiring somebody doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna be there.
Right.
Yeah, all right.
We'll, we'll take that all under consideration.
Okay.
Darlene, where are off, I thought, you told me about a, a storeroom number, where is that?
The storeroom, um.
Oh, there it is, A sixteen-sixty-point-four.
This is one thing that I have never understood, um, and I've been here eighteen years. The storeroom was always where everybody went to to get paper. And years ago before I, well, when I started, I believed that the, um, previous clerk, um, or different ones would just go and order stuff, but they all had it, so they all knew where, you know, where they were getting it from. Um, and then I know that Candy Cook, she was like the, the one that did the main stuff near the end. But it's hard to say, you're gonna buy a ream of paper and put it on clerk, but yet someone else is gonna come and get two reams out, or a case of paper, someone's gonna come and get a couple reams out and, and then it goes, even though you bought it in your budget, it's not in your budget 'cause someone else took it out. I don't know how we can divide up, you know, the zoning and building, they get the wa, uh, papers, the water department gets paper. So I don't know how we're gonna divide that up as to who gets what paper.
But right now we use that account for everybody, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what we need to know.
Um, and then the, um, envelopes, the same thing when we purchase envelopes, it goes to storeroom. Um, I believe it's storeroom. Um, and there again, everybody uses the envelopes. Um, I, I use more when it's tax time for dogs, but yet Beth uses them for water and so, you know, and Dan uses them for building. It's hard to divide who's gonna get what on their, their budget, you know? So we need to come up with a solution as to those things because those are expensive. The ad stamps and envelopes are like really expensive, so, so we need to really figure that one out.
Well, that's just kinda the cost of doing business. I don't think you can get it down to envelopes and stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
But that's it. Any other questions?
Not for right now.
No. All right. Thank you, Darlene. Ed's next?
Yep.
I started working on mine, but when Linda, when Margaret was in, I asked about some type of a up-to-date where we are. I never got anything. I'm gonna have to talk to Margaret.
I can send it to you. I can send it to you.
Oh, good.
Your email is on the website?
Uh, I don't think so, but I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get it to you. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention, and I've said this before, the court's job is not to make money. We're told that all the time, so I tried to explain the assets to you guys, how we get the checks. Uh, we give you the checks, we get a bill from, uh, DeNapoli, we pay it. And, uh, uh, some of the diversion program funds, the check comes right in to, uh, the clerk. So, uh, the only thing, uh, I wanted to mention tonight, and I'll get, I'll get you a budget here probably by the end of the week. I just got back from training. I've been at training for the last two days up in Niagara Falls. But I got back, grabbed something to eat and came right over. So I did save money on the security guys. I told you the last time I was here that I was going to get them certified, so I did. So. So last Wednesday, Claude, Jim Wells from Ridgeway and Stephen Koneski, I took them over to Webster. We got them, we had talked about this before with liability with the insurance company. So we did get the Article thirty-five and pistol qualification taken care of. So probably a copy of that should go to Kathy for the attorney file also. So we're okay with that. And they kinda screwed it up in the, uh, article in the paper. Uh, actually, Omerah, the guy with cop called me or texted me and asked me, he said, hey, I seen the article, you're gonna go with us? And I said, no, that was not written correctly. Had we gone with them, it would have been two hundred and fifty bucks a person per night, which would be five hundred dollars a per, uh, a night for security in the courtroom, or fifteen hundred dollars a month or eighteen thousand dollars a year, which right now I think we're below four thousand dollars. So that would have jacked it up a, a lot. So now we're still at, uh, Jim, Claude, Stephen. And Jim Wells is actually being paid for by Ridgway, his certification. They're gonna take care of that. But there are times when Jim Wells can come in and help out in Shelby. And our guys go over and work at Ridgway also. But it is in our building, so we're all set. So they're all qualified now.
Can you put that, I'm sorry, you put that under contractual or are they under salaries?
The, the security, the constables?
Yep, yep.
They're under, I, I just happened to look at something I had and it was under something that you guys have.
Yeah, but I think that was our portion.
Correct.
So your portion is gonna go under salaries, correct?
I don't know. That's a, that's a question I have.
Yeah, so, so I, I think that, Jim, you may already know this, the, the question is, are they employees of the town or are they contractors? And I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either.
Do you?
Did we figure that out?
Do you know? Are you an employee of the town or are, you are? Through a pay, through a payroll, by the, okay, then they're employees of the town. Do you get a payroll check through the payroll system or do you get a, do you get a check from the town?
Margaret does it all.
Okay, so it's payroll, okay. So it should go in your point ones?
So I guess, I don't know, I gotta figure that out, how that goes into my budget or your budget or whatever. That's why I'm asking, uh, for that. So I need to know where I'm encumbered at, at this point. I know I haven't gone over it all the last couple of years uh, because not all the funds are spent. And I mentioned in past meetings that we can't, while I was sitting over there, I got a notice, we get notices of people who got arrested. One of the people who I thought we had taken care of just got arrested by Medina, so I've got him coming in. One of the persons I mentioned before that, uh, we've had problems with in the past in the courtroom. So he just got arrested again. But, uh, so I can't tell who's coming in. Uh, I do put in there, I did put in the last year a little bit extra because I anticipate, anticipated extra trials. Uh, I still can't anticipate that because I have some of these people coming in. The big difference for me is that the training the last couple of years has been in Niagara Falls. For the next two years, it's moving to Albany, so we have required training. So I have to up that fund a little bit. And, uh, the clerks' training is also, they have required training. It's in Albany at the same time as the judges, so at least we'll save, uh, uh, mileage, we'll all go out there together. But, uh, the, the cost is gonna go up a little bit. I guess that's about it for me. The only thing that I need is, I need to know about, you know, where we are. So, if, if you know when Margaret's gonna come in.
If you give me your email, I will get your report tomorrow telling you where you are on your three accounts.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try to get that to you as quick as I can, I've got a lot of it done.
Yep.
But I'm, I don't know. And if you don't know, you know, the manager, the best manager is the person with the most information, while I'm missing some of it. So, I'm glad you guys are finding out all this stuff, and I'd like to know that to keep up with this. So, uh, that's about it for me, unless you have a question tonight.
I don't have any questions, but there's a common theme that people don't know where they're at, and we have to do a better job of giving you the numbers.
I agree.
So, that's something we have to work on. And I think that the accounting system that we have this year is gonna help, but it doesn't pay for the past sins of what we weren't doing.
Well, the thing with me, personnel with me doesn't change that much because I have two clerks, uh, two court clerks. One is twenty-two hours, twenty-one hours, and the other one's eleven hours. So, it's set at thirty-two hours, uh, a week, uh, that we pay them. My fee, or my pay is set, so that's not gonna change much. The thing that's gonna change is, uh, the training. Oh, I do have to add for recertification next year. Because we had the discussion that, uh, it's better to be, uh, conscious of liability, get people certified as they should. So, I'm going to have to put it in there to recertify these guys so, on a yearly basis, we keep up with what we need to do. So, and I, I'm sure you guys can understand that. Everybody has to have training, and it's a big liability-conscious, uh, situation.
Well, the laws change that require more training, too, I'm sure.
That's correct. I found some things out yesterday and today that are coming, and I'm like, you know, come on, we just learned, we're just doing something one way, and now it's coming out of Albany, we have to change certain things. So, that always adds to the cost. So, unless you have questions, uh, I'll get you that as soon as I can. I'll give you my email. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. Is that it? Well. I think we have to do a better job of providing the numbers and, uh, making sure everybody's on the same page so that it goes more smoothly. So, hopefully, this is the first step. So, anybody else have any other comments?
And just to clarify, which I'm, I know was kind of what you said, prior to this year, we didn't have financial numbers for two years. So, if you think this year was bad, you should have been here last year when we didn't even, we are, we didn't know anything about where we were. So, we're, we're, we are making progress. We're getting reports monthly. I will check with Margaret about each month as she gives the board those reports, that they get emailed out to everybody. And I think she can do that right through QuickBooks, but I'll have her check on that, so that all the department heads get them at the same time that the board is getting them. So, they'll have every, they'll have everything we have.
Yeah, all right. With that, any additional comments from anybody? Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Jen. You've done a very nice job up here, and congratulations to you, Jim. Look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Seconded by.
About Zalani?
Yes.
Lemina?
Yes.
Mercedes?
Yes.
And Hemmenway?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.